Okay, I'm gonna call our meeting to order. It's five o'clock. And we'll begin with a roll call, please.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessen. Nancy Rumpel.
All right.
I'm here.
Oh, oh, sorry, Amy.
Amy. Thank you, Amy.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
And I'm all eyes. Stu, would you lead us in the pledge since Nancy's not here?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anything to do?
Yep.
All right, first item of the business is the adoption of the agenda for today on October 1, 2024. Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight's meeting? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So moved.
That's Dawn.
Second.
And Denise. Thank you. And Lauralee, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessen. Nancy Rumpel.
Thank you. And we have a school presentation tonight. So it's from Centennial, so we'll turn it over.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer members of the board, Sarah Rasmussen, Executive Director of Elementary Schools. And I have the pleasure of introducing Dr. Carmen Folga, Principal of Centennial, and staff members and students that are here this evening as well. So I turn the presentation over to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here in our home setting here at Centennial, and we'll just get started. We just want to briefly let you know, this is what we're going to be engaging in tonight. So we have a very brief introduction and a critical thinking overview. You'll get to see critical thinking in action with a couple of our brave students that have offered to come, some of our first graders. And then there will be obviously time for questions and discussion. And this is just a picture of our staff this year. We're very proud to be here at Centennial and...
There we are.
All right, so just with our quick critical thinking overview, we just are following within the portrait of a graduate, and I'm focusing on that critical thinker. And here on your screen, you have the critical thinking foundational theory. So in the past five years, we've been focusing on the elements of reason. How do we take our thinking apart, our intellectual traits? What are we striving for? And then our intellectual standards, how do we know we have that quality of reasoning? And we're incorporating it into reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and into our instructional practices and routines. There we go. And our instructional practices and routines here at Centennial, we are providing this critical thinking through critical read-alouts, close reading, Socratic dialogues, dyads and triads, and the IC for content. And if you look over there, it has a 87% effect of success when we do those things, which is a high, very, very high. And then when you go down to next, and these are the critical thinking instructional strategies that we use, it gives a definition why we are using it, and how to make it work in an elementary classroom, and the definitions and... We have been working on it for five years, and I think as people have walked through or visitors have come through, they actually see that in action and are clearing that vocabulary and seeing that in action in our classrooms. So now I'd like to introduce Julie Norton, one of our first grade teachers, and her two little friends that are gonna share some critical thinking with us. And they're gonna be doing a dyad. It's a conversation between the two of them.
We probably need to bring some chairs so you can see us. Maybe you could bring yours up here a little bit. So we're kind of in a low-hoosh circle. Kind of like a circle, but we have three of us, so. Well, we do dyads in first grade and in other grades as well. Yes. Sometimes we're just communicating our feelings that morning, or we might be talking about an idea in a book. The topic we're talking about today is our playground equipment. We are buying new playground equipment with our PTA, in collaboration with PTA. And our question is really, how are we going to be responsible for taking care of it? Because each year, we spend some PTA money, we've got PTA working here too, purchasing new equipment. And, oh, hi, Josie, come on up.
Josie!
You can sit right there. I'm gonna grab this chair right back. Okay. And it's important for us to be thinking about our Eagle Code and how we're responsible with our playground equipment so that it will last a long time for us. So our goal in doing a dyad is really not to talk about, do I agree with your idea or I disagree? It's really just to see if we can understand what our partner is saying. Because we know that understanding somebody else's point of view can really help us when we are trying to problem solve together. So that's our goal here. I think you and I will partner up. We'll have you two partner up. So before we start talking, girls, just reminding you of our purpose. That's one of our critical thinking elements that, why do we need to be responsible with our equipment? Is our question that we're trying to answer today. Point of view, we want to think about our first grade point of view, but also, who else might be out on the playground? Who else is out on the playground besides first graders?
Big kids.
Big kids, yeah. Anybody else on the playground?
The other, the other first grade class.
First grade, sure, anybody else?
And adults.
Adults are out there. And we talked a little bit about where the money comes from to purchase this. That would be another point of view to think about is our PTA, and their part in this. We know that when we're done listening to our partner, we're going to try to repeat back what we heard our partner say. So again, we're not trying to agree or disagree. We're really, our purpose is to try to understand our partner and repeat back what we heard they say. And we can ask, did I hear you accurately? Or if we need something clarified, we can use our critical thinking standards to ask, you know, can you clarify this part for me? Our partner can also ask, you know, was I clear in explaining my perspective? So, girls, are you ready to chat? Essie, could you be Partner A? And Josie, can you be Partner A? So Partner A is going to do the talking first. Partner B, remember, we're just going to listen. Kenley is super good at this. She was doing it earlier today. And then we'll see if we can restate what our partner said. Go ahead. Girls, what do you think we need to do to be responsible with our playground equipment?
Um... I think, I think that...
Essie, you can start talking like Emily too.
You can like squeeze the balls like very hard or also pop or something like that. If you had, um, yeah. And also, please... Yeah, don't leave food like everywhere and yeah.
So I'm just going to wait a minute and give her some time in case there's anything else, because I don't want to interrupt her thinking.
I think that you have to, that is like a try to help us and yeah, you have to pick up after.
Is there anything else you want to add? Essie, did you get a chance to share with your partner?
I have one, I'll repeat that.
Okay, okay. So Partner B, are we ready to see if we can restate what our partner said? You don't remember, maybe? Do you want Essie to clarify what she said or repeat it? Okay.
Instead of, instead of focusing on going first in line, try to go first in line and pick up after some and see what their other people look like and see if you can pick up what they did. It's placing the bottom, you can pick up maybe. You can pick the bottom instead of being first in line.
So Essie, was that accurate? Did she restate what you had said?
In a different way.
In a different way? Do you feel like it still was true to what you were trying to say? Okay. Kenley, do you need anything clarified? It is here. Do you need anything clarified, Kenley? Do you feel like you understood what she said? So at this point, if we were doing this whole group, then we would have the students share out loud to the whole class what their partner said. So again, not their own idea, but making sure that they were practicing those listening skills and really understanding their partner's point of view. So that is what we've been working on a little bit in first grade. And we'll keep practicing that. Hi, Ethan.
Hi.
Welcome. Thank you for coming. Stewie. Wrap it up. Hi, anything else you guys wanted to say about our partner talks, our dyads?
Let's, let's let you go first since you just got here.
I think we're probably gonna wrap up the playground conversation. Right. Are there any questions anyone has for our first graders or for me?
Any questions, board members? Yes.
I don't...
Thank you so much.
Sorry, I just...
Okay. Congratulations. Oh, thank you. All right, thank you, you guys. Is there more that you guys have? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, so we will proceed like we normally do with the topics, and we'll work down them and then have opportunities to ask questions. I think there's a group that's coming up before we start. All right, our first item is number point one, which is the first reading of policy JFBA Choice Enrollment Program.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Schaefer, Melissa Scheier is the Superintendent of Learning Services. Tonight, we have a suite of policies, so there will not be a separate memo presentation for each, but they are segmented in case there are anything that you would like to discuss separately about them. I have before me a team of folks who have worked very diligently on updating this policy to be in alignment with CASB. So you will hear about that tonight, of course, the lines with STRIVE 2025 and the way that we just, we want to be good stewards of our statutory requirements. So I have for you Mr. Colin Dyke. He is our Accessibility Coordinator, and I would also like to add that he is a Juris Doctor. I have Patty Burden. She is our Executive Director of Student Support Services. And Ms. Carrie Bartman, who is our Director of Assessment and Evaluation. And so each one of them has a role in being able to actually fine-tune what it is that we need to do to make this policy updated and legal. So I will hand it right over to them.
All right, good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. Nice to see you again. Yes, so we are here, I'm gonna go through this, and then if you have questions, I've got some team of experts here to help. So our connection is really a focus area one of achievement, academic achievement, and focus area two, inclusive and supportive culture. And really, our vision is, is that our school of choice and open enrollment policies will ensure we are prioritizing our in-district families and students' options to seek enrollment in schools that are aligned with the students' academic interests and needs. And revision of the school of choice and open enrollment policies will ensure that the process will be done in a non-discriminatory way based on federal and state compliance measures. All right, so just a little background and review of these policies. This comes out of Colorado State Law of Article 36. And it's 2236-101, if you like to geek out on school law, like I do. At its most basic, school of choice means students can request to attend any public school or program for Colorado, in Colorado, for free, even across district lines. And there doesn't need to be tuition paid for that. And that's a unique thing for Colorado. In district-run schools, which we are, most districts have designated attendance areas because they were set up to serve immediate neighborhoods. Typically, all children who attend a school within their attendance area are offered a seat. A family can also fill out a choice enrollment application to attend a school outside of their like home attendance boundary through the school of choice process. Families can also request to attend a school in another school district outside of the school district where they live. So for choice enrollment, every school district must adopt policies and procedures to implement the provisions of our school of choice, public school of choice laws. In addition, we must ensure that our policies and procedures follow federal law, ADA, and IDEA, and anti-discrimination laws for protected students. Moreover, the Colorado Department of Education has recently made changes to regulations governing the school of choice process for students with disabilities to require an anonymous application review process. So JFBA, JFBAR. This policy is for students living in TSD attendance areas. And one of the big shifts you'll see is we have one for in and one for out because there's a bit of nuance and differences between both policies. And that is a big change that we are having today. These students, by law, receive priority over non-resident students per state law. So we must accept them first. So that's one of the reasons why we have two enrollment periods. Students will now be able to file a single application for each school of choice rather than individual applications like they had to before for each school, streamlining that process significantly. And all of our regulations have been updated to reflect laws impacting the entire school of choice process. One major change is the move from two choice enrollments, like I said, to one for current TSD students. So this open enrollment policy is for non-resident students living outside of TSD's attendance area. Applications for these students are processed after resident TSD students get priority in their choice schools. These students will also be able to file a single application for each school of choice rather than individual applications for each school, so that is streamlined. And for these applications, we'll need to be filled out yearly for these students because we always need to prioritize our resident students first. Okay, so school of choice, school policy JHD and its exhibit have been consolidated inside of the school of choice and open enrollment denial processes. Therefore, you will see them redlined without a revised policy edition. And you'll also notice they were extremely outdated. Last updated, October 1993. Let's think about where we were in October 1993. No. Yeah, not a person. There we go. Okay, and since then, that policy has been eliminated from CASB. So that's a broad overview, and I know there will be some questions over that. But does the Board of Education have any questions about choice enrollment policy JFBA or open enrollment policy JFBE?
Okay, let's go ahead, and Alexandra's eating, so we'll start over here. Stu?
Okay. Actually, I do have a question, and Melissa, I did send my question to you about the wording. If you put up a slide that says choice enrollment JFBA slash JFBAR, the third bullet, I read this over and over again, and I see no difference in the two options that are presented. Students will now be able to file a single application for each school rather than individual applications for each school. It sounds like the same thing with just a couple of different adjectives. And so I, I'm interested in an explanation from one of you, some of you, as to what the difference is between a single application for each school and an individual application for each school.
Okay, so now I get your question. I think we were thinking you were comparing this statement with the other policy because they both need...
No.
You are saying the statement's funky as it was written, and you have a great suggestion for the new wording. So what we were trying to say is that, so currently, students' families need to fill out an application for this school, and this school, and this school, and this school. And now there's one application, and then they're gonna prioritize four different choices by priority of the four. So, yes, so I'm glad you... So changing the wording was your suggestion to make that more clear?
And you think that what I suggested perhaps does make it more clear? Okay, I, I probably read this 10 times, and I thought, I just don't see the difference between those two.
We went from the bullets are similar on JFBA and JFBB, and we're like, well, that's for in-school or in-district, and we're out of district, so...
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying what your question was.
Your suggestion for wording is spot on. Love it. Now that we know.
No, no, we know. That's obsessed.
So what will be the wording?
This is just for you.
Right, that's what I thought, so...
So, yes, so this is just...
Okay, so you'll have something that's clearer for the parents.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So they get to pick inside of when they are online with the, they go through... Scribbles is the program we use. They will get to pick at high school level, let's say, Levante is their first choice. Then they could pick Thompson Valley as their second choice, Mountain View as their third choice, et cetera. So they just get to click and prioritize what they would prefer to go to, where they would prefer to go.
Any other questions, Stu?
No.
Denise?
No question.
Calm down.
Was he right's suggestion?
Dawn?
I would just say that it's really long. It's overwhelming how long they are. And I, and I understand, I mean, I understand that it's reflecting what everybody else has, but it's probably one of our longest policies now. And so that struck me, especially since what, five pages of it is definitions? If there's any way to reformat just for like pulling out terms versus what needs to be in the policy, that would be awesome because I was completely overwhelmed by just the sheer size of it. And yet, what's changing makes so much sense, and it's much simpler than what's actually all the words that we have, just to make sure that it's official. So otherwise, I love the change itself. I love that it's streamlined. And I think the other thing that struck me is, and I'm of course trying to remember back to the last time I looked at the policy, so forgive me if I've got it wrong, but there was sort of a way that we had worded it in the past that like once you came into the district, you're now a district student. And now we're saying that if you're out of district, if you say live in, I don't know, on the other side of the street in Fort Collins, that you're gonna have to reapply every year to stay up your seat. And I wonder if that's gonna be a challenge for some people. And I think as long as we're proactive in communicating that so that people don't miss that window and show up, because we literally just had this conversation with our staff here about how people show up on the first day of school because I didn't know I had to register to be in kindergarten. And it's not limited to kindergarten. So if we can just save ourselves from the fallout of that, that would be helpful.
Alexandra, any questions?
I agree with the link thing. I mean, it went from one policy that was five pages to two policies that are 20 pages each, so it was eight fold longer than it used to be. And I was trying to read through like very carefully, and it was, it's, it's a lot. So I agree. I don't know if there's any way to deal with that. Are there, is it required like from CASB? Are all these definitions and all this like very, very intricate detail, is that required to be in there?
I'll try to call it.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, so apologies for the length. Clarity of conciseness, competing goals. So, no, it's not required by CASB. But at the same, so the goal is to be very clear with parents and very upfront. Like that was, complete transparency is the goal, to save ourselves, I think, down the road. So we don't need all the definitions, but I also would say we're kind of wrapping in a lot more concepts than just normal choice enrollment, right? Like our rules for moving students with disabilities are exceptionally thorough under federal law, and we're trying to like distill them down and make them understandable in the policy without leaving things open and confusing parents. But we can certainly parent down. It's not required.
So I don't know. I mean, but yeah.
I don't know either. I mean, to be honest, as I threw that out there, I'm not saying we should do that, but I also think maybe.
Right.
Yeah. And then the other question I had is where it talks about, which I don't disagree with this, but it talks about that, you know, there should be the anonymous applications. But then it also talks about that the school will not make alterations or introduce new programs. So what if a child with disabilities applies for a school, gets accepted, and then that school can't meet their needs? What happens then?
So CDE, that is the exact new regulation that came out. It's a very long site, I couldn't read it. But it's at the very end of CDE's regulations. They just tacked it on in subsection one of the regs. And so what they have outlined is the policy requirement is that students apply, all students apply anonymously. So we can't know who any students are. There's no risk of, I don't want to take this student because they have a disability, so they're all anonymous. We offer seats out on a seat availability space basis. And then if they get an offer of admission, they accept it. At that time, then the student becomes not anonymous. And if there is an IEP or a 504 that cannot be implemented in that building, then that team must meet in the building to make that determination. The only team that is qualified under federal law to determine if a student received free appropriate public ed is that team. So they have said they must be offered a seat, and then if they are not able to get faith there, that, then they're offered, they will be offered a different seat within the choice enrollment program, however schools want to do that. We've done that by saying, here are the open, the schools with available seats where you can get a free appropriate public ed, which would like one of those. That seems like the easiest way to work with parents. And to kind of maximize where they would have said they wanted to go had they known that they couldn't get it there. If that makes sense.
Right. It does, but it seems like that could be a source of frustration to parents, certainly too. If they're like, oh, I really want to go to the school, and then they get a notification that they get in, and then they're like, oh, no, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know that there's another way to do it. I don't know, I mean, it sounds like there's not. And I like, I like what you said about them, like, you know, sorry, you can't come here, but we can go, like, go here, 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 and then giving them another, another choice.
In most situations, like all of our high schools have all of the programs. And many of the middle schools have many of the programs. Elementary, we have a few that have specialized programs. And so we would never say you, you shouldn't apply for school of choice, but like educating our parents to know where we have programs and options is always, like, we have done that before. Like a parent has said, I am looking for a couple of different options. What other school has these programs? And we are happy to give them that information at that time. But, you know, our main goal is to be able to offer services in all of our spaces for, and using the IEP process to see how can we decide faith. Especially if there's space.
Yeah.
So parents have to have this whole packet, or can it not be the...
Yeah, this is just our little...
Okay, that's what I thought, and I was listening to what they said, and I'm going, this is way too much.
Yes. Yeah. And the online application is very much their sectioned out in how they apply, yeah. It is not any of this. Now, we would have it obviously in our board documents, and it's available to them if they have any questions.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to clarify that because as they were talking, I think, and there, there's a lot there.
One thing that we might think about, given the length of this policy, is maybe shifting the definitions to an exhibit. And that way, the policy becomes much shorter and cogent. And so that might kind of, I think having definitions provide clarity and some, that level of detail typically... level of detail typically, I'm just wondering if we've had definitions and policies before, to me, those seem better placed in exhibits, maybe I'd think about.
And so what about the, what you were mentioning about schools that have these certain programs, especially elementary, is that written down anywhere so that if parents need to see which schools offer a certain program that fits the student, is it there somewhere? Or is it not, or can we not put it in print?
Well, also, there's like all kinds of different programs, right?
Well, yeah, absolutely.
So, school of choice is for programs, there's T O L, there are I B programs. So, yes, like definitely making sure that all of our families know all of the beautiful options that we have in all of those schools. Now, they still need to apply for that particular program and then apply for that school of choice, but yes, I think really making sure that people are really aware, both inside and outside of our school district, all of the things that we can offer is important. And then I would say, like, for our, our special education populations and our coordinators, really just being able to continue to educate our families on what programs are there. And, you know, some, we might add another program, so it's not always that they would always just be three or four. So it's, but I absolutely agree that we need to make sure that all of our families know how to access the programming that your child needs and which schools they can offer. It's definitely about communication.
Or am I have a question?
Go ahead.
Okay. And it's possible that Dr. Schaefer's suggestion is going to address the same thing that I'm going to ask you. Is it possible, based on what Alexandra and Dawn referenced, that these policies could have an executive summary for the benefit of the parents? And as I said, that may be kind of what he's suggesting through the regulation, so that they, they can get the essence of the policy and then still they or someone can help them understand the policy itself. Is that a possibility?
And I definitely think we need to make, and definitely tap into our communications director on a parent-friendly, putting it all out there, oh, this is how we do it.
Right.
And a, all stakeholder friendly. So, our principals, our front office staff really can say, here's our bottom line. You know, we had, we had six slides, that's really short for me, so six slides to demonstrate this whole thing, I know we can just make it much more, here's, yeah, because we want to make sure, especially the first, that everybody knows how to apply.
All right, that's the preliminary.
And one more. Charter schools. Does the law apply to them? And then does our policy apply to them?
Yes and yes.
Yes.
Cool.
Thanks.
All right, anybody else? All right, 4.2, first reading policy, J F B B. Did we dare all four? I don't even have to, but so, when it comes time for, two weeks from tomorrow night, there might be questions that will pop up, so just, okay. So, 4.5, retirement of policies. Do we need to go through those two of J H D?
We are redlining all of them?
Uh huh. So that's just all we need to have everybody be aware of.
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Unless there are questions around it.
Cool.
All righty, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Yeah.
All of that, I can't wait, just a few minutes.
All right, 4.7, is the district unified improvement plan, let me guess, is here.
All right, Madam President, board members, Dr. Schaefer, Carrie Bartman, and I are here to present to you our district unified improvement plan. Last, at the last board meeting, you may recall that I discussed data with you, our new data results, our C M A S results, our P S A T and S A T. So this, tonight's presentation is not necessarily about data, it's what we're doing with it and the plan that we're submitting to the state. So, some of this is perfunctory. We have to submit a plan to the state on October 15th, which will be actually the day before you approve of this, and we will go back in and actually resubmit it, but we do need to get this by you tonight, so. All right. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, Carrie Bartman, Dr. from Assessments and Evaluation. Our focus areas are standard areas one and two. Unified Improvement Planning was introduced to the state back in 2009, so this is nothing new to what each school and each district in the state have to write either every year or by annually. This is to ensure all students exit the K-12 education system ready for post-secondary education, be successful in the workforce, earn a living wage, and immediately upon graduation. So our D U I P goes with the Education Accountability Act. Thank you. Of 2009, and it requires us to do this each year. So our intent behind that is, as Melissa said, she presented you with our district performance framework last board session and showed you all of our scores and was able to give you all of our data. With that data, we dissect all of it as a district, as well as each school doing the same thing, as they are writing their school unified improvement plans right now, and really walking through where are our areas where we are not meeting performance at this point? And where do we really have to drill down and set goals for ourselves or major improvement strategies in moving forward over the next couple of years? And so it's in these four areas that we really evaluate everything. So we look at all of the data, we write priorities based on that student data. We actually met in our continuous improvement teams over the last couple of days and each principal brought their I L T to that meeting and have been writing their plans together. Everyone receives feedback. We met as in D A C last week and got parent stakeholder engagement and ideas. And each school will also have a S A C meeting and walk through and get ideas from that parent committee as well as their writing these plans. Then we evaluate everything, we write major improvement strategies and really walk through what that implementation process looks like over the next couple of years. As I was saying, we write these in two-year increments. And so the idea behind it is you kind of backwards plan, where do you hope to be two years from now, at the end of this coming year, and then where are we starting from?
Okay, it's five quicks now.
Is it, is that the one you want, for sure, it says?
Next one.
Yep.
And Ali went really far.
Especially being on assurances and requirements.
That's the one where it says.
Back one to assurances, I believe.
Okay.
One more back.
No, it's, it's showing up right on hers, but it's like, there's a delay. Yeah.
So we are using a new platform, and the state came out with a, a new streamlined platform this year. So our, our D U I Ps and our S U I Ps are written much more streamlined, much simpler, because the idea behind it is that we don't want to spend hours and hours writing what we're doing, we want to actually be putting it in, in action in buildings, seeing what's taking place. So, they streamlined it from seven different components to four, which is fantastic. And so we've been able to take that time and write through them. Each district and each school, depending on where they landed, so our district on our district performance framework, we landed in performance this year. And so there are certain assurances we have to say to the state that we will do and that will be included in each plan. Each school has the same format, so depending on where they landed on each of their areas, whether they were performance or improvement or priority improvement, they have different assurances that they have to say, yes, we will do these things. And so ours for this year on our D U I P is that we did a thorough look and data analysis of each of our different areas. We met with our D A C, received input from a variety of stakeholders. We are a K-12 public school system and so with that, we have to follow all K, K-3 Read Act assessment performance rules. And so we have to analyze all of that data, acknowledge we have students on read plans and hopefully are getting them to that third grade level and beyond to hopefully get them off of a read plan that they are reading on grade level by a certain period of time. And that you all get to see this plan and review and adopt it, and we are saying and agreeing to that on October 16th.
Try it again.
Okay. Yeah, we're good, we're pulled right there. Goals. So the next few slides, you are going to see basically the outline of the Unified Improvement Plan and the major topics. So we have two major goals this year. One is academic, one is culture and climate, based on the data that I showed to you on the district performance framework. Our academic goal is targeting multilingual learners and students with disabilities. We want for them to be on the 50th percentile of academic growth. Growth precedes achievement. Their achievement is not at the 50th percentile, it's much lower, but they are approaching in some categories very close to that 50th percentile, and that is a sweet spot because that means that you are going to make a year's worth of growth. So we want that and then we want it more. Culture and climate goal, we have a culture and climate goal based on our panorama survey data, so by, and that survey's about to go out here in the next few weeks, but each elementary and secondary student groups will report at a 75% or 45% respectively, a favorable rating on the panorama student survey that they have a sense of belonging. And so you might ask, well, why just 75% or why just 45%? But those numbers represent like about a 20 percentage point increase to what they reported last year. And so if we can get there, we can ratchet it up even higher. But we would like to, to definitely see our students be reporting that we're working very hard on sense of belonging district-wide. And elementary, yes, thank you, I'm being reminded that elementary's only third through fifth grade, so we do not test kids in K-1, 2. All right, so the, the next category you would see on our Unified Improvement Plan, student performance priorities. So academic is just another way of saying this more granular, this plan continues to get more and more granular. As I was explaining to you, multilingual learners and students with disabilities, the reason why is because they are actually below that 50th percentile in the, the academic growth, and if we can get them there, their achievement is going to start ratcheting it up. I want to share a, a brief conversation that I had with one of our D A C participants because they were really getting into it, we're actually going to bring it back to D A C this next time. They were wondering, what does that growth score mean? What does that academic score mean? And they were really noticing it with students with disabilities and multilingual learners. And one of them had this aha moment, like, well, this isn't good. And I said, no, he's not. Like, that's why we have to make this a goal. And so they were, they were writing down on sticky notes and we got a lot of great feedback from them. So we want to definitely see these two disaggregated groups make some huge improvements. And as I just mentioned, the sense of belonging piece, as we have studied foundationally, if we can increase the student sense of belonging is going to help with academics as well. We have to have students feeling good and welcome in their classrooms. Also on our D U I P, it asks us why we think we actually have the issues that we do. So we sit together and we do a root cause analysis and even though the students that we are identifying, they have consistently not met grade level expectations, when we go around and around, and I've saved slide space by not putting all this on there, a root cause analysis continues to ask the question, why? Why this, why this, why this? And one of the conjectures we have is not all students, we want each and every student in Thompson School District to have access to a culturally responsive and inclusive tier-one instructional experience. They all get it, a great experience that first time that they're being taught something before we jump to interventions and things like that. Same thing with our, our root cause, our culture and climate root cause. We've, we've not yet streamlined and quality-controlled our social emotional learning pieces or what we want to see in actually warm welcomes in classrooms, the adult, the trusted adult relationships in buildings, and being able to actually have that across the district instead of an opt-in type of situation. We want every single student to have a, a warm and welcoming school. So honestly, the root causes for both is just to be able to provide tier-one guaranteed experience for, for our kids at each and every one of our buildings. So while I won't read these to you, I know you're seeing the same thing, it sounds like the same thing, but it is incrementally a little bit different, the way we have to actually put it into these cells in our D U I P. But we name best first instruction, so we are going to be looking at our service delivery models for our multilingual learners and for our students with disabilities. There are many different service delivery models and are we using the best ones to get the results? Strategies such as co-teaching, the different teams that we have on our special education teaching teams that serve buildings, are we actually, you know, efficiently utilizing them and are they delivering in a way that actually is the best model for the kids? So using some research behind that as well. And our continuous improvement teams, which I believe Carrie mentioned previously, are our building leadership teams that are really working on that sense of belonging at our schools. So being able to actually have school-wide teams, train the trainer models with restorative practices as kind of a root of our philosophy. We're going to hit this one too, so that's, these are our two major improvement strategies. And last week, you heard a little from me, kind of like the now what moving forward. So, our academic plan, we have a lot of great things going on, we have great professional development, we have great instructional tours that actually walk through buildings, teams of directors, principals with myself and Dr. Schaefer, as well as their executive directors to actually walk through and see how tier-one instructional practices are doing on a regular basis. Our professional learning committee, communities, which are at the center of that triangle I showed you last time, those are meeting regularly, weekly, at every single building to discuss students. We have had some great math professional development as of late, and I can assure you that just in walking through some high schools lately, Dr. Schaefer and I have seen math that we've never seen before in our high schools. It's really been amazing, the teachers are just fired up over it, it's really wonderful. Our culture and climate plan, we have a train the trainer model with all of our social emotional learning specialists that are in our buildings that become trained trainers for culturally responsive, restorative practices. So they are, they can train other teachers, they can coach other teachers and provide help and assistance with those approaches. And just being able to increase our student engagement through student voice, we want to include our students on the big decisions that our district and our schools are making. And so wanting to make an intentional effort to naming that students are important and that your opinion matters. So those are our implementation and action plans, kind of just at a glance. Does the board have any questions about our district unified improvement plan? And school unified improvement plans will follow that same format.
Okay, we'll start with Denise.
Sorry, my throat's in your mouth.
And so timeline for the, this to be the final ones, and then October with the school versions, then?
Yeah, they're all October 15th, yes.
Thank you.
Just wondering about the, I don't know if you can answer this, but the panorama survey? Is the question about a trusted adult worded so that it's not necessarily a teacher? But could it be like a nutrition aide? Could it be a para? Could it be? Because I think that a lot of times when we think of a trusted adult, we think of the teacher. I mean, it could be the crossing guard, it could be.
I believe so, and I would actually look at, is Patty sitting behind me? Yes.
It said, it doesn't sort of steer students towards just a teacher? Okay.
It gets written, literally, a trusted adult.
Written in those words.
Yeah. I can clarify that for you.
Thanks, just curious about how, if it was the wording that was affecting, affecting the scores or not, so.
That's all. Dawn?
I love that this is streamlined, it's really, really great, especially for all the different students, or school plans. Wanted to mention that for schools that have a PI, that's where you're going to see your S U I P, right? And it doesn't always mean that you're like actually looking at the piece of paper. mean that you're like actually looking at the piece of paper. It could be that you're giving feedback on what's the biggest priorities in our school this year, right? I had some people ask me that after, um, DAC.
From DAC.
And so I was like, I bet you did it. And they were like, yes, that is what it sounded like. I was like, great, okay. It's not always gonna be exactly the model you just did.
Yep.
Um, but that doesn't mean that you didn't do it.
Yep.
Um, I am especially glad to see this level because you and I were talking at DAC about, um, how I feel like some adults get real hung up on like, we're gonna improve our test scores for this group of students, and that it gets conflated with like how we're actually gonna do it. So to see that where we're putting the energy to make sure that happened is in the things that we know work, right? The universal, um, and the culturally responsive practices. I, I'm very excited because I think even last week, we didn't have yet that, this level of detail, and those are the, really the right ways that we're gonna get there, is by supporting the students that we actually have, and not just saying, hey, you guys need to get to a fiftyth percentile, just do that, because just doing it isn't gonna get us there, right? And we've been doing a bunch of things. This is the group that is still like not seeing the gains that some of the other groups have, which I think is the beauty of universal design. Like, I know you and I have talked about it all the time, right? Is that if we teach for the students who struggle the most, everybody gets better, instead of what's normal, which is that we teach to the students who get it fastest and easiest, and then we're like, what? Everybody else didn't just get it? And so I'm very excited that we're moving that forward even more, and having the focus being on really helping the students who need it the most, because then everybody's gonna get better.
Thanks. Hello, Sandra?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is just when in doing the, are there, in submitting this to the state, is it required that there are like two areas, and one is academic and one's not? Or what are the, what are the requirements for that?
We've done that ourselves. We did that this year ourselves. We chose a, a culture and climate as well as an academic priority. They don't encourage more than three per year, just because to really effectively improve and, and get those strategies and goals to come to fruition. It's, we don't want more than three. So some schools will choose two academic and one culture and climate, et cetera, but we won't have more than three per, per building. Okay. We, we have asked each school to have one of each, and one of the ways that we embedded kind of more than one academic area in our academic goal is to have it for both math and English language arts.
Okay.
And with two groups.
And with two groups, yeah.
Yes.
So it's actually four.
A little bit, yeah.
Okay. And then my other question was about, and related to the panorama survey, you say on there that the goal is to have this improvement by May first of 2025, but the panorama survey is happening soon.
We'll have the results sooner than that.
Right. So is there, is there any way like, there's only been a very limited amount of time to implement these strategies?
Yes.
By the time the panorama survey goes out, is there a way to like recheck in the spring? I know we talked a long time ago about doing it.
There are interim benchmarks that we've put in place.
Yes.
And so, again, we're writing this for two years.
Okay.
So in two years from now, you know, that, that goal, we have one, and then hopefully we'll extend even better, depending on what those percentages are. And then there's also a component in there called interim benchmarks. And so we could use, um, additional data because again, more than one data point is important. Our main data point will be the panorama survey. However, schools can use things like Bloom sites, or, um, any other survey data that they're actually giving out to students, um, at that point in time. Some are choosing to chunk out portions of maybe just the sense of belonging. So the questions like, are, are students, does a student have a person, you know, a trusted adult that they have? They could be surveying just that question, maybe twice per year.
Okay.
And they're getting interim benchmarks with the overall, um, piece being the panorama survey data each year.
Okay.
So there are multiple different options of being able to do that throughout, and the plan gives that flexibility for it.
Okay.
And one more thing, I'm so sorry. Um, we can actually pull out just the sense of belonging and, um, resurvey all students in the spring, so we can look at the consistency from fall to spring.
Okay.
And then other schools will be doing the good flex.
Oh, yes.
Um, it's nice to see what we did last week at DAC kind of fall into place.
Yes.
And, yeah, it's almost done well. Stu?
Yes. You don't have to go back to the first slide, but I want to read part of a sentence from the first slide. Ensure all students exit the K-12 education system. Are we a K-12 education system, or are we a pre-K-12 education system? That's the first part of my question. And then, secondly, if we are pre-K-12, how does your, um, report tonight impact the littles?
Perfect. So pre-K does not need to write a Unified Improvement Plan, and so that's why, per the state policy, that statute comes right off of CBD's website. And so it's only kindergarten through twelve. Our pre-K system, they actually were a part of the CI teams today, and they are federally funded in a different way, and have to, um, put together plans and submit those for an entirely different area. So they actually worked on those plans today while K-12 buildings were working on their Unified Improvement Plan.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have anything more? All right. Thank you. All right. Four point eight is first reading policy, FEB, architect, engineer, construction manager. Hi, Todd.
Hi, Barb. Good evening, Madam President. I'm Board Education Dr. Schaefer, Todd McConney, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. So similar to the last, uh, presentation on policies, there's actually three different, um, uh, titles here, but we'll do it under one section. So it'll be FEB, FEG, and FEGB. On all three of the policies, there's, I would say, minor updates, um, addressing state statute, and then, uh, practices that we've learned over the last several years since they've been updated last. So I'll go through each and just, uh, highlight, um, a summary of what has been adjusted or proposed to be adjusted. Uh, on FEB, architect, engineer, construction manager, it's addressing all firms, uh, instead of just singular architects. Um, updating the contract documents. So our policy actually referred to an old set of contracts that we've not used. So we actually use our, uh, contracts that are, um, done by cabinetaries. And then updating the governing authority at the state level. So pretty, um, again, simple updates, but those are the summary really of the main points. When you look at, uh, FEG, construction contracts, biddings and warrants, um, delivery methods clarified versus general approaches. So the policy is, we were looking and talking to the legal counsel, um, it defines more about approaches. The delivery method, um, this is, it's clarified more than just general approaches. So it actually goes in a little more depth of the different approaches. Professional services, it's updated to reflect, um, industry norms. So we add some that were previously there, and then we added to them to just clarify a more extensive list of actually what that means. Um, and then there was just, um, you'll see some, uh, calls, just errors that we needed to fix up that, uh, have been there for a while, so.
We didn't find them?
Yes. I didn't necessarily look for it that.
There's probably still some, Stu, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
We know that's your role.
And then, uh, FEG. FEGB is, uh, we're required to bond, oop, we're required to bond contractors. Uh, we just needed to update the bonding amount. So it's currently fifty thousand. So it says in state statute, you say bonding requirements are updated, and when there's contracts at fifty thousand or more. So that is a quick review of the three policies. Uh, we'll come back then, uh, next time for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any?
When, when was, were they last updated?
I do.
Out of curiosity.
It was a couple of eighteen, uh, as I was thinking.
Twenty eighteen?
Twenty eighteen, and then, oh, what's the one? Was, uh, we don't have the nineties in here, I think.
Okay, I guess that was my main question.
Yeah, I think oh eight was the other one.
Not, not nineteen eighteen, right?
No, no, no. Yeah, just to clarify, yeah.
Okay, it was two thousand five.
Sure.
Thank you for not making them twenty pages.
Anytime.
Don, did you have anything? Okay, I didn't either. Stu? All right. Thank you. And now you stay also because we are on the Loudoun Ditch water share contract.
Yes. Thank you again, Madam President. Um, just a little background on a contract that's for approval next time. Uh, these shares were previously approved on the order to be surplus. So to recall, we sold the, uh, finally sold the ninety-six acres of land. Uh, we had water shares tied to this, so they're surplus because you own the land. Uh, therefore, we have water shares that we can't, uh, use. So these were placed on open market, uh, after approval. And then we did get a, uh, contract, um, with Russell Bakers, the buyer, for a hundred twenty-five thousand for the two point five shares of Loudoun Ditch, which is on the north side of the district. So, um, the contract and purchase sale agreement was, uh, reviewed by legal counsel on both sides, um, after process. That's what will be for approval, um, or requisite approval for the next board meeting.
Okay, cool. Questions? Don? I'll attend her. Okay. Proclamation, uh, for Berthold Schools, which is four point twelve. Mike, I think you're helping us with this. Am I not? Are you not? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We're sneaking up on you?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay.
We're ready for it. Proclamation.
All right. So, um, Stu and I met, what was it? Stu and I about a month ago? Maybe a little more than that. Yep. And we talked a little bit about the upcoming sequocentennial that's happening in Berthold. So if you don't know what that means, that is, that means it's a hundred and fiftieth anniversary of, I guess you'd say, formalized education coming to Berthold. So it's not, it's not anniversary of the first Thompson School District school, or even the modern day school down there. It's basically the first schoolhouse that was constructed in Berthold. So Stu and I have been brainstorming some ideas of some creative things that we could do to kind of celebrate, um, this achievement. And so one of the things that we came up with was putting together, uh, an official proclamation that if you all agree that you're willing to do, that you could read at your, um, upcoming meeting, which coincidentally will be in Berthold. The next meeting will be the day after it, so on October sixteenth, um, be an opportunity for you to, yep, be an opportunity for you to celebrate it by, um, reading aloud this proclamation and, um, doing it accordingly. We have some other things we're gonna be doing too. So for example, on our district social media, and we'll be posting some of the Berthold School twos, but we have five days of like historical information that we'll be providing, um, some posts on social media that talk just about the creation of the first school down there, and what it spent in the community, and some historical tidbits and stuff for, um, stuff like that too. So. So this is a draft that we prepared for, um, for you to take a look at. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Um, I think if, if you'd like to, would you like to do the reading of it down there?
I would like to do that.
A bigger, that would be the case.
Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna come and carry it constantly.
I was hoping.
I was already. Thank you.
Yeah.
I do have one question, Mike. You and I talked about, um, approaching the town of Berthold to see if they might also be interested in doing a proclamation. Have we made any progress on that?
Um, Chris Kirk has not gone back to me. He was very receptive to it.
Great.
And stuff, so, um, we'll have to touch base soon again, but he was receptive to it when we entered. Yeah.
Anybody else have questions?
Can one of the tidbits be whatever word you said for a hundred and fifty day of our trade?
What that means, I know.
Yeah, because I don't even know what that word is.
Well, it's funny. Stu and I joked that that's not a word I think we've ever used in here.
Say it again.
Only?
I still don't use it very much.
Say it again slowly.
Sequocentennial. Sequocentennial, yeah.
We're gonna need a post about that.
Yes, there, yeah, there's, that's one of them that's on there. We already have the, um, we already have the five posts ready. Yeah. So there's one, there's one that we have designed for each every day. Um, it starts out, um, well, first of all, it talks about the anniversary itself, but it also provides a historical, um, tidbit, and then it also thinks, um, the Berthold Historical Society, or the museum down there, has been really good to work with. They, um, they pulled together a lot of information for us that we used to put that together and stuff. And, yeah, it's interesting.
I'm smarter now. Thank you.
Yeah, I gotta work it into a sentence.
Yeah. It's like, it's like. Fifty times before we own it. That's what I've heard. All right. Um, any other questions?
I'd just like to thank Mike for his help in putting together these ideas. We, we met, I brought him some information I had, and he's really taken off with it and done some, some other searching on his own. And I, I think it will mean a lot to the community.
Cool. Thank you. All right. Four point thirteen is just the standard actions consent. Just the start of the list. We know that it'll be longer, and we know these things will all be on our consent agenda as well. Um, then it's Stu's update on our legislating.
Yeah. So you all have a copy of the, um, legislative platform, and some of you may be thinking, it looks different than it did when Stu sent something to Laura Lee and just asked her to run it off. So, uh, after we adopted this, uh, at our September eighteenth meeting, I contacted Dr. Schaefer and I said, um, what, what's been submitted looks like something that was formatted by an English teacher as a piece of expository writing, which is what it was. I said, will we do something to jazz this up? And so he turned it over to Mike, and this is what we have. This is, this is one of the two looks, um, that it has. Uh, the second look is, uh, in development at this point. When I went to the Casby Winter Conference in January, um, I also picked up one that had more of a, a magazine layout. It was only one piece of paper, but rather than being stapled at the top, it was like a, a nine by sixteen piece of paper that was folded in the middle. And so we're also going to, um, present this same information, uh, in another format, and something that, uh, when we go to conferences and so on, we can, we can take this along. Most of what we've seen so far is stapled pages from other school districts without photos and so on. Uh, and again, I want to thank Mike because when he sent this to me initially, I thought, wow. I knew it was gonna look different. I didn't really expect it to look like this. And so, uh, thanks to him for this, and we'll look forward to having this, uh, to have the other format for you to look at as well. In terms of a Casby report, about all I can tell you is that, as you know, the legislative session will begin after the first of the year, and I'll be attending the Fall Conference, uh, which will be in two weeks in Pueblo. Uh, I know. You wanna come along?
I miss you.
Sorry.
And so, um, I'll hopefully be able to bring back some more information to you about, um, pending legislation and, and things like that. So, uh, that's my report, Madam President.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm representing Stu.
Yes, I'm doing it. I am gonna ask that we take a few minutes to get up and move around. And there's cupcakes here, so if you want a cupcake, anybody wants a cupcake? Okay. We are ready to begin our discussion item, six point one, which is graduation requirements. I was somewhere, we were at, um, Loveland High School, and they asked us, uh, we were visiting the cadet program this morning. There were four of us. Yeah, the three of us and Don were there. Nineteen or twenty kids in that group. It was, it was good.
Wow.
And one of them asked about items on the agenda and their graduation requirements. And so they wanted to know about it. How'd that end up on the agenda? And I said, well, because it was something we were interested in, so.
Yeah.
Timely.
Awesome.
Awesome.
It, it, we are grateful for that, Madam President, and I'm sure the board, Dr. Schaefer. Um, tonight's presentation with members of my team here, I'll introduce them in a minute. Uh, this is a topic that you all brought forward, is something you wanted to study. So we thank you for that opportunity because in doing so, we were able to find out very interesting data, and being able to discuss it with each other, and, and share it with you, and being able to frame our questions for you tonight, to get your input over what it is that we do here in Thompson School District. it is that we do here in Thompson School District for graduation requirements. So to my right, I have Mr. Theo Robison, who is Executive Director of Secondary Education. We have Mr. Andy Stevens, who is our Director of College and Career Readiness, and Ms. Tiffany Jones, Director of Critical Instruction. And together, they put their heads together around requirements, credits, pathways, and all of that. So I'm going to let them take it away and engage you in this topic tonight.
All right. So greeting, Madam President. Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, Theo Robison, Secretary of Education, Secondary Education for Thompson School District. And enthusiastic about having this conversation tonight and providing some, some education around how we got to where we're at today. So our strive twenty-two-five connections are focused on student achievement and then inclusive and supportive culture. Within that, we want to, we want our students to graduate to make sure that they're prepared academically and socially in order to enter their post-secondary opportunities. So what we plan to do tonight is go through the history behind the T S D graduation guidelines and then also to talk about what are some of the current graduation guidelines and what we'd like to consider for the future, which will be enacted and stuff that Andy Stevens and Tiffany have. So when we think about the history of our graduation requirements, so in twenty thirteen, the Colorado Department of Education brought forward new guidelines to be enacted for the class of twenty-twenty. This incorporated civics being a requirement and then also some competency menu of options for math, reading, and writing and communications. And then, so one of the things that we recently learned is that C D E no longer maintains a minimum threshold for credits. Previously, it used to be seventeen, but as of recently, we've learned that they've changed that, so they no longer have that. So previously in our time here in Thompson School District, we had a committee which was basically brought together by a variety of different stakeholders in twenty thirteen. These stakeholders included board members, teachers, principals, students. And so that Thompson Delight was created in order to help us to look at what the new state graduation requirements are and to try to build that pathway throughout our system into a policy. And so then in twenty eighteen is when they concluded their work, and in twenty twenty-three, C D E implemented some additional requirements, some additional requirements, which is the Unit of Holocaust Studies and then also the point five civics credit to be embedded within that. So in Thompson Delight in twenty sixteen, they held monthly meetings, compiled the teachers, counselors, administrators, community leaders, like I said previously. And this was the start of looking at creating a new I K F that followed the new state guidelines for graduation requirements. So the main goal of Thompson Delight was to rethink the graduation requirements in light of the new requirements from the state, which approved by C D E. And then also through that Thompson Delight group, we also, we also implemented a community service hours requirement as a graduation requirement. So as of what I shared so far, we'd like to take some time and ask the board members if they have any questions about what you just heard or take them specifically to our history of graduation guidelines.
Don, do you want to, do you have any to start with?
I have a question. Well, I just have a question about what, you said that there was a civics requirement and then there became a point five credit civics requirement. What was that, was the first one not specified credits or what was the difference between the two opposed?
So that's a good question. I don't necessarily have any. Tyler Schlegel, our college and career.
Yeah, so civics has always been a requirement, but C D E came down and said, we want at least a semester of civics. So when we talk about semesters in our system, it's a point five credit. So that's why that point five was there is because that semester is that point five credit C D E doesn't necessarily have. I want this much credit for civics. They just said, we want at least a semester of civics.
Whereas previously, they didn't specify.
They didn't specify how long, what time period the class had to be for that civic part, yep.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The only question I have is, we didn't have that little PowerPoint, the little slideshow you went through, and if we could have that because I'm a very visual learner.
No, it was, it was not. It was when we had our, when I was looking at it before, but now it's not.
Yeah, I, I.
No, you have to, you're going to have to re-log in because I just reloaded it.
Oh, okay. All right, well, we'll find out then. I just want to make sure we have it.
I had to reload.
That was, that was all I wanted is I wanted to make sure because, like I said, I'm, I just don't hear always everything that you're talking.
Oh, that's great.
So, yeah, that's it. Stu?
I have several questions. I think this is a history question. All right. Why will the twenty-eight credit diploma sunset this year?
So, so one of the things that we've learned is that when we put in the twenty-eight credit diploma, we didn't necessarily make a distinction between that and what the level of rigor needed to be. And so then what we've learned from a twenty-four credit of distinction is that kids could go through the twenty-four credit diploma and actually because of the concurrent enrollment courses and because of the A P courses, might have a more rigorous journey, but then less time to do a twenty-eight credit diploma because they're taking these more rigorous course offerings. Where you could have a twenty-eight credit diploma that we previously called distinction and never go through such a rigorous journey. So therefore, it looked kind of, and I don't always want to say inequitable, but it almost looked inequitable to have a twenty-four credit and a twenty-eight where that twenty-four would actually put kids on a more rigorous track.
Okay.
Based on their course selections.
And my other question that I think is historical deals with the Unit of Holocaust Studies. I wasn't aware that we taught the Unit of Holocaust Studies.
So that's recent, as of twenty twenty-three, and it's recently been implemented in Tiffany Jones', I'm sorry, I called you another first time, my apologies.
Last year, we had that approved through World History and Geography. We did that progression, I believe, we were at Thompson Valley High School and we brought that forward. So that unit has to now be embedded in that course, and we didn't have that naturally. And so that's where the teachers came together and then developed that unit together.
So that will be taught at all of the district high schools?
Yes.
And it's required then?
It is, state statute.
Because that's a required course?
Correct. It's a required unit of study.
Within the World History course?
Correct, within World History and Geography course.
So if, trying to figure out how to ask this question. So do all students not take history and geography?
They do.
They do, okay. I don't need to ask a follow-up question then. Yes, thank you.
I'm good, okay. All right. So we're good, so moving on.
Well, we're, well, she's doing that. Who, who else did Thompson to life? Anybody else?
So I know when I came in, it was towards the end of that, and I inherited that, and Tyler Schlegel kind of helped me understand the background and the history pertaining to that. And I know when I was on that, that last, my first year, I remember that Dr. Loripas' Award was on there and Pam Power also on that, giving, so I do remember some of the people that were part of some of these conversations.
Yeah, it's not on mic yet. Just a second.
You can.
Oh, no.
You'll have to log out and look back in.
I can.
Well, do it now because I just republished it.
Okay. Okay, one more time.
So where are we going to go next in this presentation is where are we now with graduation requirements? And so this is probably the place where we all want to be and then probably for the future thinking here in the next few slides. But so students are able to graduate with the twenty credit diploma. And then we also have a twenty-four credit diploma. And within that, we have a twenty-four credit diploma with distinction. This school year will be the final school year of our twenty-eight credit diploma. That will sunset with the class of twenty-twenty-five. So C D E, as I said earlier, does no longer require a minimum number of classes or credits. And so they no longer look at the higher, I'm sorry, they do look at the higher education admission requirement. And so the way that relates to us is when we built our twenty credit diploma, it was built knowing that students will still have access to an N C A A college opportunity. But we also know across the country, there's a low bar of expectation, but then other schools have a differentiated bar of expectation in order to get accepted into a D one or N C A A school. So, but this was built with students having that opportunity to access that, especially here in local Colorado. Some of the counselors that were involved in helping us develop this twenty credit diploma looked to ensure that that was a part of this possibility. Also, so students must also have a math and reading and writing communications competency. So we provided you with a handout. This handout that's in your package looks like this. So this is the menu of options from the Colorado Department of Education, which gives us a multitude of different ways for students to improve their competency in reading, writing, math, and communications. So if you would just take some time and look through that. And then also, we also placed in here our graduation requirements as well for you to see. And then this is enough for opportunity for you to ask some questions.
Give us a second. So I remember when I came on the board, I think it was like the first year I was on the board, that there was a huge amount of discussion about, maybe you were there too, Stu, because I'd been, about, um, applied arts. Is that correct?
I think maybe we, that Don and I were new to the board on that game discussion.
Yes. Yeah, we tweaked that, as I remember, because we didn't, like, students were having a hard time meeting that criteria with what we had available, if I remember right.
Yeah. So seeing the difference in, in the, moving across from the twenty credit to the twenty-eight credit with distinction.
So one thing that I wanted you to think about when you look at that is that, so there's not necessarily a difference in the amount of core credits. So this goes back to the part where I was saying, even if you had a twenty credit diploma, they still put you on that track.
Right.
To be able to get into a N C A A college. And so when this was built out, you'll see, like, in that twenty credit and that first twenty-four credit, they basically still have the same amount of core learning expectation, except for when you get down to the world language, then that's where we ask you to have two years of world language. But then another part that I'd like to call out too is that when you look at the twenty-four credit diploma and the twenty-four credit with distinction there, you'll see an increase of four classes of math. So that's one of the differences there.
And do the I B classes just kind of blend in with all of this?
Yes.
Is that how it works?
Yes.
So what questions do you as a board have? We'll start with Alexandra, do you have any right off the bat that you see?
Not about this part, no.
Yes. Theo, I'm going to ask you to clarify something that you just said. Did I understand you to say that our students who graduate with a twenty credit diploma don't have any difficulties getting into four-year colleges and being successful? Is that what you said?
I didn't say that part because I haven't measured that in any way.
Okay, so.
The part that I was trying to say, I'm sorry. Okay, let me make sure I clarify what I was trying to say. So what I was trying to say is that when the twenty credit diploma was built, I know the counselors that helped us come up with the twenty credit option during that Thompson Delight time wanted to ensure that our students can still have access to an N C A A opportunity for college. So then we know that with a twenty credit diploma, our students still have access to that opportunity, especially here in the state of Colorado. But our dilemma with this, as with all other types of things, is that across the country, there's different expectations of what it takes for you to get into certain institutions. So then that could cause a possibility of students not being able to access, probably say Harvard.
Okay.
Probably say Yale, probably say Princeton. Like, there's a different amount of expectation that you would have to have in order to build your portfolio to be accepted in some of those institutions.
All right, that gave me the clarification that I needed. So I have one other question. For whom do Accuplacer, A C T, A C T work keys, and S A T minimum scores apply as a graduation requirement? For whom do those scores apply? I don't understand.
That's a great question. Any, every kid that we serve is in a high school, needs to be able to demonstrate their competency through one of these criteria, one of the menu of options. So one of the things that we did as a district, and so I would say this is probably Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we implemented the work keys assessment, so we had a work group of counselors and teachers and principals. This was probably like nineteen, twenty nineteen, I want to say. And so within that work group, we looked at this menu of options and we said, so if there was one thing that we wanted to ensure every student had access to right away in order to show they met the competency, we made that decision to be the A C T work keys. But then from there, we also know that students, when you take an A P class, you take a concurrent enrollment class, you take I B classes, like, you take, you also receive a C T certification, that also gives you your competency measure. But we wanted to kind of think forward and say, well, what if we did this work key, say, freshman or sophomore year? That was the theory and practice, but then what happens is that once you start implementing and people get back to work, that idea didn't work out like we thought. And so what happens now, as students become seniors, is that we know that they're either going to be doing their S A T score, they're going to be doing whether they took the concurrent enrollment experience and got the appropriate mark, or whether they took an A P class and got the appropriate mark, or a variety of other things that this outlines.
All right. So follow-up question to what you just said. So let's assume we have a student who has accumulated enough credits to graduate but has not reached the minimum score on whichever one of these measures is available. What, what happens?
They can't graduate high school.
And they don't, they, they don't graduate if they don't also meet one of this requirement?
So that is.
And we hold to that?
Yes, I'll give an example of how much we hold to this.
Okay.
So, so I will tell you, I believe it was last summer, we recognized that we had about twelve kids in our system that we had to call back and we asked them to come and take the A C T work keys because, to show that they met the competency, because accidentally the school didn't have those kids do it. So then Tyler and I connected with the school, got with the students, and these students came back to take the assessment. Some people were away at college and then, so I'm literally telling you, but they had to figure out a measure that would demonstrate that they made it because we also have to put it into our system. And Carrie Bartman here could probably explain that better.
Is there remediation? If, for a student who, say, has twenty-two credits but hasn't reached the minimum score there, so Tyler is shaking his head, no, there is no remediation. That student flat out doesn't graduate.
I mean, we do the capstone process.
Yes, we have capstone class two built out for twelfth grade. And so the capstone process, so we, so within this committee of teachers that helped us establish the work keys, the capstone in our system. So E L A teachers built the set of skills that they expect every student to be able to know and be able to do and demonstrate in order also to meet this measure, because that's another piece of artifact that you can use in this competency menu here. And so we met with E L A teachers, they gave us the skills. We also met with the function algebra teachers for twelfth grade algebra, and they also gave us a game of life, which is a competency measure, and a list of standards and skills as well that they can incorporate inside these classes to ensure that these students met the expectation. But this is the dilemma sometimes. Like, ideally, that can work. However, there, we always have some kids in the system that, for whatever reason, one or two may have not taken one of these measures, and we end up finding it out on the backend. We want this process to be a hundred percent more thorough. So what we've done over last year, from what we've learned was a fault in the past, is that now I have Tyler Schlegel here meeting more regularly and frequently with schools, and I've also worked with our principals to ensure more deeply that this just does not happen. And I believe this last year, we probably had another two or three that, that we recognized, but then we tried to get that corrected right away.
So you used a word that leads me to my next question. So you used a word that leads me to my next question, then I am done, Bart. Which, so the only students who do a capstone project are the students who have not met the minimum requirement? They are the only ones who do a capstone project?
No, no, no. Any school could take, any student could take the class. However, those students who haven't met that expectation.
They have to do it if they want to graduate.
Yes, yes, indeed.
Okay. Okay, I, I like that because it's providing an opportunity for that student to graduate.
Yes. Ms. Bartman just made a statement in advance, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry getting here.
We did not have any this year because we, we put a process in place this past year where my team does a grad pull monthly for Tyler and Theo. And so then that, that goes to the principals of where each student is at according to graduation requirements, as well as where their competencies are. So that we are not having students walk across the stage in May, not having completed all of those areas. So we didn't have any of those this year.
Okay.
We do have some students that have until the, the end of October. They'll do, or I'm sorry, the end of August, they get to complete some classes. They are finishing coursework and those types of things through the summer that they can still come back and graduate. However, there are not students that are walking across the stage in May that have not completed each of those areas.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Are you done, Stu?
Yeah, he told me he was done.
Done with this round. You're on, yeah.
Put that in writing. Okay, so I want to talk about top end of how to gain the system. And I'll follow along with, you know, where we just left off. So 24 credits, if done strategically, can be done in three years. Or if you're bringing math credit from middle school, correct? Eight credits a year? Pass everything?
Technically, if you took eight credits a year and you passed everything, you can certainly attempt to try to, but we try to make sure that our juniors that have that number of credits take concurrent enrollment courses. Or take CTE certifications. Or do other things to keep them in school for their full four years.
So this, I don't remember which meeting, we saw like the ascent numbers and the concurrent enrollment numbers. They seem really low to me, given like the great number of students we have that are seniors that, and these are amazing, amazing programs. But how do we get more people to take advantage of them? I mean, this is a cost related appearance. It's, you know, getting kids really ready for college while they're still going. And my daughter, as a senior, is sitting, she needs to take an English class. And then she's done. And like, what, her motivation is not great for this entire senior year because she only needs to pass this one thing. And so, like, 24 credits kind of seems light to me, honestly. Because you can do it so fast.
So this is where I credit our counselors. Like, I will tell you, like, our counselors.
We have a building of four brand-new counselors last year. It was like, it was just like, we need a whole two-over year in terms of scheduling and like paying attention to this stuff.
So, so one thing that I remember when we were finalizing our IKF is that we had conversations about that specific topic. And one of the things that I know our counselors were trying to hold very tight and our principals was around the fact that there's so much more that you can do that senior year, even if you met this number of credits. And so those concurrent enrollment opportunities, those ascent opportunities, the CTE programming. But the other part of it is a lot of our kids just love being in school and they want to just be a part of that environment for their full four years.
But then that's 45% we want to feel like they belong there. That number doesn't match up to me.
When you say it that way, um.
That's a pretty low bar. But, you know, I mean, maybe it is the social component, maybe they're athletes, maybe they're, you know, it's a club.
That's a good point.
But I don't see that, you know, they just want to hang out there, honestly.
So you know, something else, and I don't know if we have it in the data packet, but Carrie Bartman's department, Kelly Stain's department put some numbers together for us. And one of the things we saw is that, like, we had less than 1% of our juniors since 2021 graduated with 20 credit diploma. Because we really hold tight to this extenuating circumstances that was defined by us in policy, so to speak. But, but, so I would tell you, like, it was surprising to me because, like, I would have thought that that number would have been bigger based on what you said. Because we've analyzed it, and you certainly can get through your high school journey in three years if you chose to put your head down and do that. But the people in our system, the people that work with our kids on a daily basis, they do an incredible job helping our kids look at their options and help them understand the importance of being a part of that journey. Because as we said on the first slide there, when we said that preparing our students socially as well is also important for us, some part of that social component is being a part of that four-year part into high school. And so that's where we look at the whole well-roundedness of a student. Even though we obviously know we're here to educate students, that social part, kids are educated, principals, they try to just help support that in conversations with our kids. You can see that for sure.
For sure. I certainly want kids in school, and I want junior adults working with them to help that experience be a good one. I still feel like 24 is, you know, there's a lot of kids that, that can and are ready to move on, probably not. But with this, makes it pretty easy to do so if they come in, you know, doing the work. And we know there are lots of kids that won't do the work, so they're, you know, catching back up. And it lasts several years, a bit weird. But if we get back into a steady state and we're not all home, or, you know, I, I don't know, I, I would like more of her. And then now, let's talk about the other end. The 20 credit diploma, I, and Mark mentioned once that it's too light. But I do think there are the kids that it's the ideal diploma for, and I would hate to see it go away. Like, that's it all on the table. Particularly, you know, people struggling with foreign language, you know? It certainly, most universities is sitting in one of those two years. But not every kid is going to be a good foreign language learner. Are they guards? They just can't pay. Or draw, or whatever. So having that option and keeping kids in school longer, even with just 20 credits, is important as well, because of the social, emotional piece. So, I'm talking both ways there. But having enough flexibility and rigor to be able to get that entire cohort of kids through and ready to do what comes next.
I understand. So you're kind of leading us into this other sheet that we have, that we provided in the packet as well. And so, so on this sheet here, what we tried to do was help us.
Yeah.
Before we go there.
Yeah, let's go over to Amy.
When do students start talking? I'm sorry, I have one. Oh, I'm, go ahead, yeah, go. So, the other piece of whether it be capstone or basically getting some kids through at the end of the year that probably shouldn't graduate because they weren't in class ever, or rarely, still happens. There's a lot of pressure on teachers to sign off on kids. Having spoken with teachers, and indignation with a lot of the kids that are put up on the student. So how do we avoid kind of making it a joke? That no matter what, you're gonna graduate. Even if you haven't shown up, if you haven't done the work. Mastery is great, but there's also part of being a working person later. You do have to show up. And attendance when you're working is important. And we are demanding very little of kids in terms of attendance if we're just signing off on different things. And I'd be happy to talk to you more about what I've heard. But there is a perception among teachers that we're gonna graduate kids, whether they deserve it or not.
Interesting.
Yeah. Okay, can we go on?
Yes, I am now done.
Okay, Amy.
Um, what grade do students start talking with counselors about their high school plans, like, I mean, are they gonna jam pack? Do, do seventh and eighth graders know that they could possibly be done in three years?
Yep.
Okay, so when do they, when do they learn that? You know, like, a 1st grade?
To my knowledge, no one's telling people that. So I don't want to be, I don't want to, like, so our counselors.
No, 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 I mean, like, when do they start, like, what grade do, I mean, is it ninth grade that they say, here, here's what you need to graduate? Here, you know, let's plan this out? Or is it seventh grade, eighth, like, when do, when does that happen?
So.
Each child is put in on an AYG at 24 credits. So when, when a student enters their freshman year of high school, they're put in at 24 credits. Once students, after their sophomore year, we start to see that they might not make that 24 credit threshold. Their junior year, they would get the opportunity to move to a 20 credit diploma with signatures from teachers, counselors, ultimately signed by Theo. And so then that would get put into our infinite campus system that that student would move from a 24 credit diploma to a 20 credit diploma. That is not widely broadcasted, it's not something that they start their freshman year with. It's not something that's there on that side of how the diploma is.
So let me correct that a little bit. So I sign off on a lot of these during the senior year. So because people hold that tight. I get them because they want to ensure that this is a thing towards the end. So typically, when I start to see these, they come second semester of a student's senior year. So I don't necessarily see them unless there's an instance where a person's trying to graduate early, which is underneath 1% of our juniors that are trying to graduate early because of some extenuating circumstance. But the majority of the times when I'm receiving these sheets from our building administrators, it comes the second semester and typically toward the last nine weeks of the senior year is when I start to get a lot of them to sign off. Because I'm thinking, my hand is hurting, I'm getting too many of these things right now. But the thing that I will tell you is that, like, it's interesting because I think, I think, I just want to over compliment the people in the buildings. Because I think they do a phenomenal job helping students understand the opportunities that they have from ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th, and 12th grade. And, and just educating our kids in order to help them see the importance of standing there for the four years to take on some of these other opportunities.
I wish I could agree with you, and I'm really sorry I can't.
Hold on a minute, let Amy finish.
Yeah, but I just, for clarification's sake, a guardian needs to sign off on that, too. It's not just the.
It should be, yes, it does a conversation that takes place with, with everyone there.
Just making, just making sure.
Yes, and most of the time, again, they aren't even introduced until that second semester of junior year. And like Theo said, sometimes it's the, it's senior year, but it's not something that is broadcast at all before then.
And when I get them, it's the senior year. Maybe I just want to make sure. When I get them on my desk, it's typically the senior year. And it's typically that second semester for the last nine weeks.
Yeah. I learned of it in a counseling meeting, end of sophomore year. We have this other option. We're not supposed to talk about it. But, yeah, there is a 20 credit diploma. So, I mean, it's being introduced sooner in certain cases.
Done.
So I went, I, so you know, we've had, you and I have talked, like, for real about my kids. And we have been all over everything, every data point in here. And, and I think that, you know, looking at how we got through COVID and like, and some of the, like, lasting impacts and what we're bringing back for real and what we're doing in practice every day is, is what's really, like, how do we get the foundation back where we want it to be, right? And so I hear that in what you're saying. I'm gonna say that I think, oh, a big piece of 2019, right before COVID, we were talking about, and there were some study sessions on equity grading for high school. That gets to everything you were just talking about that pains me because I was like, yes and to both. Because I had a student who got the 20 credit diploma, and I'm so glad that he had that because he never, ever would have finished the 24. He just wouldn't have. And, and so we, like, we need that. We need it, and these numbers tell us how much we need it. I, I, I'm a little bothered by the idea that we're presenting it as something shameful or less than as well. Because I think that there is a real place for it. We did it on purpose, and we did it to make sure it was meeting a need, and it is legit. And if we are, like, shamefully bringing it up, that's not the same as intentionally saying this is the best thing for some students. And we talked in so many other presentations on so many other things that we do for our high schoolers about all these different ways that they can be successful, and that we're setting them up for success, and that 20 credit diploma is part of that. And that, I think, also goes to, like, that, that piece of, is this rigorous enough? And so I'd like for us to think about, as we move forward with this, the embracing what we do and being proud of everything that we choose to bring forward instead of, like, half-assing everything and then being like, why would we decide to do that, right? And I, I know how many people are touching this. I, I pushed a little bit on the counseling piece because I'm going through it right now, and I'm like, that does not sound like what's happening in my reality. And frankly, I don't know that it happened with any of my kids. I feel as if they're, like, how, like, how we're having those conversations in a way that's really deep and rich and meaningful for the student to the point that the parent knows about it is a real opportunity. And I know what I just said there is the whole thing, right? But, and by the way, my daughter has a great relationship with her counselor. She was his counseling aide, she sees him every day. So, like, we're talking, like, as good as it gets. And I still feel like, she was like, did you know I could graduate next year? And she's excited about that, she's proud of that. And I think that is something we should tap into along with that thing of, like, how do you extend your senior year? And that felt like it wasn't as strong as I wanted it to be from me not jumping in and, and doing it, right? So as we look at all of this, I'd love to see equity grading being how we address the rigor and being proud of our 20 credit diploma. And I'd like, I'm gonna fight fiercely for us to keep that and have it mean something as well as having it not be shameful. Because my son, he did it, worked so hard to do it. And he is very successful and can absolutely get into college, and he's thinking of getting into college. And if you told him in his senior year that he was gonna think about going to college two or years later, he wouldn't have believed you. So we set him up to do the thing that he wants to do now that he got a little older and wiser. We still did all of that, and he was really successful out of the gate, doing the thing he loves, coming from our schools. So, you know, I feel good about most of what we have. It's just like that, making sure that it feels right. Because I, I've heard the same thing about us just getting kids through. And I do know that there are some, there is a, a healthy dose of people in our community who feel like our diplomas don't mean anything these days, and our teachers feel like I have pressure to pass these kids. I've heard that thing about when passing kids who aren't in class. Meanwhile, I also have, you know, a, a kid who's struggling with attendance. And that, the thing we need to worry about with the attendance is different, right? Like, us adults need to think about the equity piece of why do we have a student who's not going to class? Because even the ones who've seemed like flackers aren't. There's a reason that they're not going. There's an equity to it, there's a reason that they've checked out or feel like it's checked out on them. And often, by the time somebody is a junior or senior and they're really getting the information on what you need to do in the last couple of years, they're struggling to do it. I feel like we have a lot of really good pieces. It's just that, like, not everybody is using them in the same way. And that is tough for us, right? And, and I, I, I worry about the fact that, like, we're chasing kids, trying to get them the thing at the last minute, the way that we are. So I'm glad that we're talking about, like, how are we looking at the data more proactively? And how can we do that even better all the time? Because I don't want anybody to be surprised by any of the stuff that's happening. And we're big, we're a big system. Of course, it's gonna happen like that if we don't put stuff in place. So, thanks for everything, I just, huh, it's big.
Alexandra.
So I'll just wait. I'll, I'll wait till the intensity.
Oh, okay. Okay, I don't have anything more I want to add.
Okay. I don't have anything more I wanna add.
I do, yeah.
Okay.
I, when I looked at the information, uh, which included credit requirements of nearby districts, what I noticed is the lowest minimum is 22. And I wonder why ours is 20. And I completely heard what you said. But if it's such a good idea that we have a 20 credit diploma, why do no other districts in our area offer this as an opportunity? I know very often when we compare ourselves, we compare ourselves with brain. The minimum is 24.5, Pooter is 24. And so, as I said, although I completely heard what you said, why don't other districts also believe that? Is it because they don't need it? And I don't know the answer to that question, but I'm interested in.
I'll offer you a thought. I'll offer you a thought to that question. I, I think it goes back to what the Thompson to Life Committee decided that they wanted to have. And I don't know back then if the Thompson to Life Committee cared what other, other stu-, districts were doing or compared themselves to what other districts were doing. Um, and, and got those answers, but for whatever reason, back in 2016, decided the 20 credit diploma was a value that they wanted to have for Thompson School District and it was, it's certainly unique.
Yeah, I'll add a little bit more to this.
It is unique. So it goes back to 2016 because I did wonder how long, how long that happened.
So I'll add a little bit more too. And I, and I think Thompson was being divergent in their thinking during that time period. Because there's another thing too that's a caveat, like, none of these districts have three diplomas either. So, so like when I think about it overall, I think that we kinda saw it in our system for students that needed, um, an opportunity to still show they can get their high school diploma and they can challenge theirselves throughout whatever dilemmas or traumas or trials that are happening through their life to access that 20 credit diploma. But when I look at this grid here, that's a good question, Stu, to bring up like, why is, we're literally the lowest when you look at the sheet here when you see a lot of 22s, 23s and 24s? And then being here seven years now, I'm a believer that our kids could do 22 or 24 if we made that decision through a committee and came up with that idea. So, so just from seeing what we've been able to accomplish. But I'll also tell you some of these school districts have reached out to us too to ask specifically our neighborhood north. Asked, does this still allow kids to get to the NCAA? Because as we're looking at our requirements, we wanna think about if that's something we need to do in our district. So not saying they're gonna do that, but they did reach out to me for that level of understanding.
Theo, do you know how many students who graduated with 20 cred-, with a 20 credit diploma actually have at least 22 credits?
So we're still working on that data. So I will tell you, Flavin Ferguson is gonna try to get that data pulled for us within next week.
Okay, I'd be very interested to know that.
For information systems, yeah, okay. Any sense?
Okay.
I have to go.
Okay.
I'm done.
Denise. Adam.
Yeah.
Done. Okay. Alexandra.
It's fine. I think, I mean, I think there's still more.
Okay.
Stu gotta be here. I'm trying to get here while it's on.
So what, what did we do before we got there?
But, uh, so now all serious aside, so what we wanted to do, and so we're gonna scratch that, this slide here because we actually had this updated on a handout for you. So, so we had to go rerun the numbers, thanks to Carrie and thanks to Tyler Schlegel and Andy Stevens and Carrie Bartman, who found the error in the data. So this report here that's in front of you, the sheet, is more accurate. It shows you the percent of each high school between 20 to 24, the number of 20 credit diplomas by percentage that have been provided, 24, 24 credit with distinction and 28 with distinction. So those are the percentages of kids in our system from 2020 to 2024 that received this level of diploma. So it was unique to pull this data because it made you, it made me tell myself, are we giving out all these 20 credit diplomas and people believe we're just giving out 20 credit diplomas? But this data here reinforced that actually we're not. Actually, it's with the intent of the students that seem like they need this level of support. Our counselors and our principals are hoping that to a tight, firm expectation. The thing that I wanna re-echo was that the Colorado Department of Ed clearly tells you based on the menu of options, if they believe that a kid has been able to graduate high school based on them meeting that level of expectation. And I think sometimes we find ourselves kind of in, in a conflict of ourselves pertaining to, um, do we really need to have all these classes to show that we're competent for a high school diploma? Which CDE will tell you, if you met this menu of options, technically you've done. But that's some other conversation that we might choose to get into at a later date. But these are the percentages of where we stand currently for the diplomas that we're passing. So do you have any questions about that data that you're saying?
Thank you for bringing it up. It is really helpful.
Um, I will say one other thing related to all of this, which is that, like, we know that when you're doing rigor in your teaching and your universal design, people will raise to it, which is the other reason why I think like, sharing what we do and being proud of every option we give a student and saying, yes, this is something that we are saying we do is important because then it's not less, it's different. And whatever those things are. And like, like the 22 question, thank you for bringing that up too. Cause I, I, I stuck with the 20 only because I saw what the struggle was and I, and even though that was during COVID, I feel like there are still students who are feeling that way and we're gonna, we know that when we look at a lot of our academic stuff. Um, I also think about like, every conversation we have regardless of what the topic is that's presented to us is part of us like, putting meaning behind this and making sure that we're supporting people and doing the professional development and the practices and the day in and the day out. And all of that matters because what we adults do is what's ultimately gonna set the students up for the best success. Right? And so there are things that we're putting into practice, we're talking about every time that students today didn't have access to because we're getting better at it right now. And that's where my, some of my heartache is as well. Is that like, we're still working on some of, setting everybody up for success in order to put in, like, I guess I felt, like, if I could confidently say every student could get that 24 things, I, the day that I feel like that's true, I'm all for it. And I want that. And I, you know, like, it's not lowering the expectations so much as making sure that we've done the thing to make sure that the students can do what they need to do. And that's where my heartache is with some of this.
Any other questions? All right.
So. Okay.
Okay, we're skipping that one.
So, well, we could celebrate that, but hopefully, we've seen that in the past and then we'll get a new update hopefully in the near future of what our current graduation rate looks like. So we're gonna just go pass this. So we're gonna skip this one, we're gonna skip that one. Gonna skip that one because we just did that. We just went through that. So then, so next up, I'd like to introduce Andy Stevens, our Director of College and Career, and Tiffany Jones, our Director of Curriculum Instruction for activity that we have for future thinking.
Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the board, thanks for having us this evening. Um, Tiffany and I have, uh, been given the charge of leading what's next. And so we hope that you feel good about some context that we've provided, some historical information, some current landscape painting for you. Uh, but what Tiff and I are really hoping to leave tonight with is some more guidance from you uh, as the policymakers of the district around what it is we're looking to change in IKF and as we kind of look to the future. And so really our goal is to take feedback that you've provided, you may have noticed Tiffany's been, um, making lots of notes for us, um, and really start to engage with various stakeholders to start really brainstorming what the next iteration of IKF is gonna look like for us in Thompson School District. Some of those stakeholders you'll see here on the screen. Uh, we had an initial meeting last night with our EC12 instructional group. Those are instructional leaders that are district wide. They represent all areas of instruction in the district. Primary, secondary, core subjects, elective subjects. Um, and that group will serve in an advisory role this year as we do this work. They are not a policymaking board or team. They are advisory in nature. Um, we will work with school administrators and counselors. We obviously want student voice at the center of this work. We've heard that loud and clear this evening that everything we do as a district is for the students, right? So their voice has to be central to the work that we do. So we will, we will work with building leadership and learning services leadership to identify different student groups to ensure that we have a wide student voice in these advisory roles. It's not just the athletes. It's not just the DECA president. It's students from all walks of life in our school and in our system that are experiencing what we're offering day to day. Uh, and then I mentioned learning services leadership, the, the four of us sitting here, Tyler Schlegel and Carrie Bartman among others, as we continue to just really forge this path forward for what we're going to do with IKF moving forward. So, uh, to that end, uh, Tiffany and I have designed a little activity for us to do. And so what we're going to do is I'd like to just lead us in these questions. And, and some of these have kind of already been answered a little bit. So please know that we've, we've documented what you've said, so we don't necessarily need to repeat. But if there are other things that you as a board would like to share around our current IKF policy, we would love to hear what those celebrations are. Because that will help guide conversations around what is a non-negotiable for us. What do we have to ensure remains as we make revisions to IKF moving forward? So I'll, I'll open the table. This is certainly just open dialogue. If there are things that you, we've heard 20 credit diploma, we've heard other things that are, you know, of value to you as a board. But what might be some other things that you appreciate as you've, you've heard some of this information this evening?
I, um, would like to know where we go with and the impact of our TCC program and the impact of pathways and how that affects graduation. Is it increasing? Is it changing? That kind of thing.
Rest of you just shoot, when you're ready, have an idea, put it out there. I'm not gonna control this.
I'd like to know the graduation rates in the districts that have the higher number of requirements. We, we often talk about our own graduation rate. I'd be interested to know how it compares with the districts that have 24, 25 and a half, or 22.
Sure.
For me, that would help to inform whether I would actually advocate to increase, um, graduation requirements. That would be part of my decision making. So I'd appreciate having that.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
Well, I, if it's at all possible, like, how many of our students end up going to post-secondary ed and carrying remedial options? So, they're having to redo stuff.
I would actually extend on like, um, I don't even know when I just heard you say this. It feels like maybe yesterday, but that can't be true. Um, you were talking about the data we have for post-secondary.
The matriculation, right?
Yeah, it, it, you know, and the fact that there, we wanna have like, better understanding of that and everything. I absolutely want my hands on that because I feel like that, that's a treasure trove for this conversation, right? Like, what is it that students are really experiencing when they leave here? What is it that they go, oh my gosh, no one told me I needed to know that, right? Cause I've heard that by the way, about all sorts of things. And I'm like, I know you actually did learn that. Did you pay attention to it? You know, right?
But, uh, are there things that you value or appreciate?
So I think sort of in relation to what Denise was talking about before is the question about, is it the expectation that kids will be in high school for four years? Um, because I think, I mean, I have, I have one kid who graduated last year who was pretty much checked out the entire senior year. Um, and was, had to do a few credits, was doing the, you know, the IT apprenticeship program, which, you know, was a great opportunity, but also I felt like was maybe not enough sort of structure and focus to, to keep her where I thought she should be. Um, and it was, it was, it was a tough, a tough year getting, you know, getting her through. I now have another kid who at the end of his sophomore year has 17 credits already. And so will need, you know, seven more credits over two years. And is, and is talking, you know, and now is at the beginning of his junior year is talking about, you know, I think I'm gonna, I wanna finish middle of junior year. And I, I, you know, I, I, he can, you know, if he ha-, he has the credits. But I feel like when I went to school, that wasn't a thing. You went, you went for four years. I have no idea how many credits I had. But you just did it. It was just you, you started as a freshman and you finished at the end of your senior year and that was that. Um, and so I think there are, you know, a lot of, a lot of kids, in addition to my two, who the senior year becomes just a, you know, a whatever. And I, and I don't think that, um, is valuable to them or to the school district or to society as a whole. Um, yeah, and so that is something I think is important to look at is even though a kid can graduate, you know, I mean, my kid will have 24 credits at the end of his junior year. He'll need, I think, like, like Denise will need one English class and that's it. So, even though that's, you know, required, how, how do we make it an expectation that kids are in school for four years? I think Mark is experiencing some of this right now as well.
My daughter, uh, so September 30th, she got her first college admittance. So she's now admitted to college. Just like, why am I still?
Yeah. And so I think, you know, why, yeah.
But similar philosophy, right? I mean, my, my experience was four years and there's a, she's taking a lot of concurrent enrollment and getting college credits and whatnot. So, but, but I mean, there's a, there's not a one size fits all for some, or shifter.
Right. And so I think, I mean, yeah, so I think, you know, sort of, so what Denise was saying on, I mean, I think there needs to be both. But I think there needs to be an emphasis on the kids who are doing good and can graduate. But how, what, what's the four-year plan for them so they don't check out their senior year?
What can we offer them that would allow them to want to stay and what can we do next? I mean, here's what, here's what you've done and here's where you could go. Which one of these do you wanna do? Not, you, you can finish or you can keep going. Well, yeah, if we put it that way, but if we come up with a plan, how can we entice them to learn more and be that?
And I'm sure cost is part of this, but.
Well, I'm sure this, but. We should have lots of kids making a family.
Lots and lots, yeah.
Exactly. So we need to market that to parents from the 8th grade and maybe sooner on and track kids who feel due it.
So it is in legislation that at the spring of the 8th grade year as a district, we actually have to send out all parent communication to all 8th grade families. So in legislation, that is spelled out. Uh, we do do that. We work with Ames Community College and Front Range Community College to send out that information. Um, as far as costs, Gordon and I work really close together to give you just a perspective. You know, Pooter School gets $250,000 to teach for their concurrent enrollment kids. My budget this year is a million. So we, we, we're gonna do about 4,000 credits just this fall. Last year I did almost 7,000 or we did almost 7,000 over the whole year of credits. So we continue, I have meetings in the fall and in the spring that just talk about concurrent enrollment, ascent, um, to try and get it out there to parents the best we can. Uh, but in legislation, it is required that we work with our community colleges and send out a requirement to all 8th grade families. and send out a requirement to all eighth-grade families before they enter that ninth-grade year.
Good, and then we need counselors who did it.
Yes, agreed.
Teachers to identify kids and say, "Hey, this would be a really good next step for you."
Everybody in the district should be marketing that opportunity. Because our parents are not across the board going to be able to afford college. This is a way we can get kids more education, whether it be technical and career education or, you know, a spring board to a four-year degree with, you know, minimal effort. And, I mean, 7,000 credits is great, I mean, don't take criticism at all.
No, I don't.
It should be three times that. More kids need to do it.
And, and if I may...
Before staying at 24.
Right, so one of the challenges that we face as a district around concurrent enrollment is because it is so instructor-dependent, we are trying to brainstorm ways where we can incentivize our staff to become credentialed to teach concurrent enrollment. And also identifying, the reality is, transportation is a huge barrier. And so if I don't have staff at a high school that can teach college math, and so a student has to drive to the Lerner campus in Fort Collins, and they don't have parent, you know, parents are working full-time, so it's up to them to get there, that's, that's a true barrier. So how are we addressing that challenge to reduce that barrier and allow our students greater access so that they never have to leave the schoolhouse where we provide transportation every single day?
Well, and, I mean, the digital options need to grow.
Yeah.
We should absolutely take advantage of them.
Sure.
You know, maybe there's a coordinator in every building. There is a coordinator in every building that helps, you know, with that sort of experience for kids. And making sure that everything works and the connections are good and...
I don't think anybody is actually suggesting this, but I would hope that we would not discourage every kid from finishing high school in three years. There are kids who hate high school.
Yes, well, yeah.
Who need to be out of high school in three years for a whole variety of reasons. As I said, I know you, nobody is suggesting that we say no to them. But I'm not sure we want to also send a message of total discouragement for that. Because many times, the reason they want out of high school has nothing to do with academics and they already have the credits. It's social, it's need to work, it's family problems, whatever it happens to be, so, yeah.
And I would just add as well that, like, so many students who struggle in high school, I mean, we've all heard that story of people who went on to then go, "Gosh, I really actually loved it when I did this instead."
Yes.
And so I think that, like, having the adults who are able to help make those connections and not limit students and giving them the opportunities and filling their time and having these people, like, you know, like really meeting the needs of those students that are in front of us is, is that best hope, right? Because I do think that, you know, to have that time be meaningful is important in the end, right? And to, and to really say that, like, we, we say, "This is the stuff that we are doing and we do feel good about the stuff that we are making available." With that in mind, it always crosses my mind to really make sure that we are talking to the, to the kids who leave the system, right? Whether that's the ones that want to graduate early, the ones that drop out, the ones that go to Ferguson, I still say that every student in Ferguson has a story to tell on what we need to do better in our other classrooms, all the way back to kindergarten. Right? We need to be interviewing them multiple times to say, "How can we make this better from day one of your education?" Because that's going to really inform how we do this best. You know, the special education, the, the multi-language learners, those are the students where I, you know, I think that those are our best opportunities when we find out what it is that's going to help them want to stay in school, what is it that we're doing for them that sets them up to be successful in their life. That's when we're going to have something that, like, meets the needs of everybody. And, and I feel really good about, like, hearing these success stories. And I know that, like, the quantitative data that we have is very, very powerful. You know, I mean, I feel really good about so many of these success stories and of what our students can do as high schoolers, as recent graduates, as, as they're doing in real life. I think that there's some really amazing things that are coming out of our schools that I'm really, really proud of.
Yes.
If I could off, sorry, Tiffany.
One more. I do think, and I don't, we need to give them some very practical skills as well. Learning about money, money management. Particularly in this new digital space, there are a lot of parents that they can't just say, "Yeah, here's, here's your right check."
Right, right.
They're, and, you know, setting up accounts and what it takes to get an apartment and, or feed yourself. We're missing a lot of those opportunities. How to stay safe from cyber criminals. You know, you can teach it in one class, but, like, living in a digital age presents all sorts of challenges and opportunities. And, you know, they're digital natives, we're not, but I think you can't, they need to have some skills that allows them to live independently.
And so when I talk to students, they ask about that. Like, no matter which high school I go to, when I talk to students, they ask, "How can we have more financial literacy type of understanding? And how can we build that into our classes?"
Absolutely.
And I think what Denise is talking about is not career skills. You're talking about life skills.
Life skills, yes.
They are two different things, career skills and life skills.
You get your first paycheck.
So I think that's...
What does all of this mean? Why would you start a 401K? My daughter's like, she got promoted, so now she can get a 401K. And I'm like, "Oh, that is such great news." "No, they're going to take more of my money." And, you know, and so it was, I'm like, oh, and I've, I talk finance all the time at home. And still, that was her takeaway, was, "I'm going to get less money." And so having people understand all these things, just beyond the check, the cash you get to spend, how they can have better money skills so that they're not going to payday lenders or, or whatever it is that, you know, holds them back. Because, you know, financial knowledge is not something we have ever really taught well. And it's more and more important as money and using your money, couponing. Who knew that people didn't, I mean, I didn't know people didn't know how to do that. But they don't, why wouldn't you vote for Sycamore or whatever? So they can save money. There's a, a whole set of skills that they just don't have. And we don't teach, okay?
We, we can agree that this is an important, necessary topic. And I think we can also agree that a high school diploma at minimum is a gateway to, you know, post-secondary options, whether it's college or career or what have you. It's interesting because, you know, I, I, let me also say that I think we could agree that there, there shouldn't be a one-size-fits-all. And I would say every school district, including ours, has options for students, which I think is important. One of our, one of our goals, among many, is to disrupt, I think, institutional barriers that a lot of our students currently face. Generational poverty, you know, maybe first generation to actually either graduate high school or college, teaching, life skills, career skills, community skills, social skills, all those other pieces. And it's incumbent on us from pre-K, early childhood through 12th grade, to provide an array of experiences, opportunities, classes, both practical and also theoretical and rigorous and all those other pieces to get, to get kids ready. And my fear is that I, I don't want high school necessarily to be a sprint or a race just to finish it. And I don't, I don't necessarily hear anyone saying that. So on the one hand, while I think it's really important that we create options that will fit the student needs, I also think we have to be able to counsel and help guide students with at least making informed decisions. So, and, and I don't really hear anything to the counter, but I just, I just want to be mindful that for many students, this is, you know, you get one shot at education, really, early childhood through 12th grade, and I want it to matter.
Yes.
So I don't know, those are just, I'm not sure how...
Absolutely, meaning and matter and...
Is it, they take something away from it, it's not just they have to show up?
Yeah.
That they actually leave every class. And it's always like, "Oh, I'll never use this." Well, you never know, actually. And it's that discipline of going to class and accomplishing all milestones as part of this that ultimately will make them successful later. But we don't, I don't know if we talk the picture or not, how it all comes together.
Well, I think, you know, one of the things that I feel has been an undercurrent and a lot of things we've talked about is the role of, of just, like, helping people understand, right? And it's a constant thing, right? Communication, like, it's a constant challenge. And, and I think about that in so many different pieces that we've talked about today where it's like, I know that there are things that we're teaching, but if we're teaching it in a classroom setting and it's academic and, and it's, it's not yet connected to the reality, that's part of why students aren't getting it until, you know, then they don't realize they got it. We all did it too, right? And I wonder if, if there's something we can do, especially that senior and junior years, we're talking about having those, the extra time for a lot of students of, of like mentoring and coaching. And it doesn't have, have to necessarily be specialized skills. There's like so many ways that we could do that. But, you know, to actually say, "Yeah, you know, you, you did learn how you do your taxes, but now let me talk about why and how," right? Like, that, that piece that we all need of someone to say, "But this is why you need to know it." This is what, how to answer the questions you have. And that could be helping them with what, how are you going to use, all sorts of things. I mean, I wonder if, if some of what we think about doing is, is maybe less about credits and classes and resources that we don't have. And maybe also thinking about other things that we can be bringing into this experience to help with the real-life things that we know students are needing. And also so that they're hearing it different ways from different people, because that's when it sticks. And then obviously, the families need to hear it too, because I am sure that there are several things that I'm like, "I didn't know that and I probably should have known that." And I probably did get it in 20 emails that I missed the context of myself. And I pay attention probably a lot compared to a lot of our busy parents. So I wonder if some of what we're talking about here is a little bit softer in how we help people prepare for this stuff.
Other suggestions that you, as stakeholders, would like us to carry forward?
Not really a suggestion, I just thought of one more question. Does LCS determine its own graduation requirements or do they use our graduation requirements? Do you happen to know what their requirements are for graduation? Yes?
Yes, I do, because I appreciate you giving us your questions, because I looked into that. So they actually develop their own system and they have a 26-credit diploma and a 28-credit diploma. And those students there, I believe, will take four years of four core courses as well.
But 26 is the minimum?
Yes, and a 28.
Okay.
How many graduates do they have on the number chart?
That's a good question, too.
I think their numbers are going to be going up, but I think it has been within the 20, 24 range, something like that.
I believe it was 20 this last term because you paid attention to the number.
Just curious, thank you.
You mentioned barriers and logistics. I think that's, like, going to be critical. I think every, every good option is going to come with challenges to do the good option. And so for us to all, to be just creative on how we solve those, getting what we want. I mean, I think part of, part of how we should design this is for, if we had the resources, what would we do and then figure out how we solve for that.
I almost hear another pathway, but it doesn't fit the typical pathway that we think of. But I hear a pathway that's surviving life or, or a pathway, a pathway that helps, how to be an adult, you know, how to do the things you have to do as an adult. I don't know, I, I mean, that's just what I was kind of hearing as we were talking. I don't know how else we'd ever put it in there, but I hear that in our, gosh, it's too bad, or what could we do?
We only like, no.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just...
That's the evil path.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, there are programs that exist where you, like, first-generation students end up getting things that like help them figure out, "How do I do college?" Because nobody's, can tell me that. We kind of need that, but segmented for a lot of different parts of adult life, right? So I also think, like, exposing students to what college might look like and career and tech ed. Because I think about, like, how our families of origin often are informing that way more than we've... Like, I don't want to be pushing that on my kids, but I have, right? My kids know what I taught them. And, and I'd love to have my kids learn more than just what I have to offer them and being able to give the information to say, you know, if somebody who's never done that before, here's what you need to know about all sorts of things.
I think that this has been a really true picture of what we wanted our conversations to be. Because it's not just somebody telling us here, I mean, it's giving us an opportunity to really think and expand. And so I appreciate you guys really looking at it from that point of view and helping us. Because we really, all of us said in our retreat, we wanted to know more about graduation, but we didn't have a lot of background and, you know, we could see the numbers, but it didn't answer the questions that we had. So I appreciate it.
What I'd like to recommend is, so we'll have staff kind of go forward and engage stakeholders. And then what I would like to do is come back to the board in the late winter, early spring and just kind of pick up on this conversation. There's no predisposition to outcomes, we're not racing to make any changes in the, in the near term. This is a, this is a, we have need for robust conversations at some point. You know, we absolutely want to engage community as well, parents, they absolutely need to be part of this conversation too. I think today creates just a little bit more of some feedback and guidance which you've provided. Hearing some of the themes that have emerged and I think that'll be super helpful, having that lens, if that's okay with the board.
No, I, I think that we probably all agree this is where we wanted to go two years ago when we kind of started this process. So, yeah, this is truly a study session because that's what we could do. So, thank you. Yeah, and I agree. Revisiting in spring would be great. Thank you. Yeah, did I, did I, did everybody get everything shared that they needed to? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. All right, I guess I can, our meeting adjourned.